All right, we're ready to hear from Budget and Finance on a proposal for our budget for next year. This is a proposal for all of you who's listening online and are not here. So I want to make sure you know this is a proposal. All right, Dr. Laura.
Before Dr. Laura starts, I do want to preference that the governor has not approved the budget. So this is all contingent upon the governor approving what is in the General Appropriation Act right now.
Good morning, Chair Tiwol, Board Trustee Dr. Williams. I would like to thank the board for the opportunity to be here today. As Yedid, Dr. Williams mentioned it, this is contingent governor approval. This presentation is intended for a BOT workshop discussion. Since we had the report from Coachman and Wakefield, I think it's a great way to start with the capital outlet. For this fiscal year, we received a proposal for the Public Education Capital Outlet, the PIK command of $47.5 million for deferred maintenance. We also received $5 million for Tarpon Spring deferred maintenance and internal capital outlet and debt service. We will know more about that probably in the middle of July or probably later in July. In terms of our capital improvement fee decrease in the last couple of years, from last year to this year, there is a decrease of $1.7 million due to the declining enrollment. In the revenue, we also include the fund transferring for the Tarpon Spring workforce. The total funding available for this fiscal year is $75.7 million.
Dr. Laura, did you say the capital, the fee decreased because of enrollment?
Yes, ma'am. There is a fee, that is part of the tuition fee that we have, that is a fee that is associated for the capital improvement. So that have a decline in the last couple of years.
How much did it decline this year?
$1.7 million.
Thank you.
We have $2.7 million for our bonds payable. We are on track to pay the bond by the fiscal year 2020. For major construction project, we got $5.8 million. This include the Tarpon Spring Workforce Center for $5.5 million. The remaining $200,000 is for some of our in-converse IT infrastructure for the move of the district office. For college-wide infrastructure and renovation, we got $56.9 million. This include the deferred maintenance of $47.5 million for the PIK money, the $5 million for the deferred maintenance at Tarpon Spring, and the $4.4 million college-wide infrastructure and renovation. As you heard early on, facility is working with Coachman and Wakefield on developing the master planning to make recommendation on how to make use of the $47.5 million.
I just want to add to here with the $47 million for the deferred maintenance, that is funded by federal dollars, and the state has to receive that funding before it would be, we would be able to start those projects. They're anticipating about October, November, and then it takes about 20 to 30 days for the colleges to draw down. So you wouldn't be able to actually start those projects until probably December maybe anywhere.
And on behalf of that, I want to remind you that we have not received that amount of dollar in the last three or four years. Our college-wide infrastructure renovation was supported by capital improvement fee. For contingency, we have $7.2 million. For existing project and miscellaneous expenses, we got $2.3 million. This also include a $1.4 million allocated to all campuses to address their needs. For internal construction personnel, we got $959,000. So that's what we have as of right now, and all these fundings are pending governor approval. Do you have any question about the capital outlet?
I do want to remind you for the bond payment, we kept the amount at $2.7 million a year, but it was refinanced later part of 2021, and our payment decreased to $2.1 million, but we agreed to continue with the $2.7 to possibly pay it off earlier. So that's good.
If I recall this chart, we present this one on the first health of the college back in last year, and it is important to know that for benchmarking, the integrated post-secondary education data system, what they call an I-PED, NACUBO, SACUBO, the Florida Department of Education, and our annual financial reporter, in terms of benchmarking, they use function allocation. For the accounting manual of the Florida College System, the organization unit of each fund are grouped together according to the functions they perform. So for example, you got $3.8 million in materials and supply. By the natural, you go to the GL. But as of right now, what we're trying to do is what is working and what is not working? Where are we putting our money? So you can determine by the function allocation, how you allocate the $3.8 million into the instructional aspect of the institution or the administrative part. The re-instruction, the re-instruction includes salary and operating costs of the academic unit where the student take classes, like A&amp;P courses, vocational courses, credit and non-credit, and EAP developmental. For academic support, it's encompassed library, tutoring, education, media service, academic administration, computing and network. Student support include area like financial aid, admission and counseling. When you go into the administrative side, institutional support include salaries and operating costs related to executive management, finance department, legal services and data management. The physical plan include facilities and campus securities. Student financial assistance include the fee waiver for the student. Some of the fee waivers are mandated by the state. The next chart provided by the Florida Department of Education provide the annual cost analysis as a percentage of the expenditure by the function. This analysis allows to benchmark our budget allocation. You can see that the 10-year system average, 45.2% is related to the re-instruction. 11.89% is related to academic services. 10.30% is related to student services. 18.09% is related to institutional support, and 14% is for plant operation and maintenance. Moving into the next chart, as a 42922, you can see that the re-instruction is 10 at 43%. Our academic support is at 14%. This is based on our actual. Student support is at 12%, institutional support 14%, and the physical plant operation is still at 30%. Any question about those charts? When you go into the next slide, you can see our comparison with the Florida College System average, the Florida College System for the 2020-21, and SPC fiscal year budget 2021-22, and the proposed budget for the fiscal year 2223. The re-instruction, and you can see that we still at 46%, going up 1% at 47% on the SPC side for the fiscal year 2122. We were at 14% for the academic support, and at 15% for the proposed budget. Student support, we were at 12%, 30% going into the 2223. And institutional support is still at 14%, and our plant operation is at 11% for the proposed budget.
I just want to point out on this slide, the institutional support where the Florida College System average is about 18%, and so we're at 14%. This is where sometimes when Dr. Williams or you all are in Tallahassee, they will specifically look at the cost analysis and point that particular line item out. So this was reduced by probably about 5% over the last few years, just within SPC.
We would like to remind you that since 2018, SPC continued to align the financial resources to enhance our student success, and this is a clear example of what we're trying to do at SPC. The next one is the analysis and benchmark category. When you look at this, this gives you some benchmark threshold, basically by the Florida Department of Education. For salaries and benefit of the 500, the general ledger, you're looking to be between 75% to 85%. SPC current fiscal year is at 76%. When you look at the current expenses, which is 600 in the GL, the norm is to be between 15 and 25%. SPC is 10 at 23%. And again, this is for a current fiscal year. When you look at the capital expenses, it's supposed to be between 1 and 5% on the 700, currently we at 1%. The next one give you an analysis benchmark category, give you some example of the proposed budget and our actual budget for the fiscal year 2122. So you can see the salaries and benefit, which is the 500, is supposed to be between 75 and 85. This fiscal year 2122, we are at 76%. Fiscal year 2223, we're looking to be at 75%. On the current expenses, which is the GL 600, the norm is to be between 15 and 25%. SPC fiscal year 2122 was a 23%. Fiscal year 2223, it looked to be a 24%. Internal capital expenses, we look to be reminded at a 1%. Any question about that one? We'd like to remind you that September 14, 2021, the board approved the use of $20.8 million for the spending plan. But in this current fiscal year, pending the new vote, we might going to end up transferring $6 million, which we already paid off the all-state shareholder, and we're looking forward to transfer the Tarpon Spring workforce expansion project. For the proposed budget fiscal year 2223, we include $4.7 million in expenditures. Something that you ask us all the time is how we can tie our resources to our academic pillar. So here's an example of how we're going to distribute those funds for the $4.7 million. You can see for that for academic excellence, it's 28%. Economic mobility is 21%. Community engagement is 9%. Employing experience and engagement is 28%, and financial vitality is about 14%.
I just want to remind you, and it's that 7% benchmark that we're required to meet when it comes to the reserve. And so that was took into effect, we submitted a plan to the state October 1st, which was the plan that you all saw in September of last year. That plan was to spend the $20.8 million, and within that, we had categories of where we would focus those dollars on. And so by the end of June 30, $6 million of that will have been used from that spending plan.
Thank you. Before I move into the next section, it's important to know that Dr. Williams, President of 2017-18, the goal was to align our resources to the strategic goal of the SPC and how we can become more efficient. In another word, what is working and what is not working? The initial phase was to reimagine SPC assessing our resources. Now during the Health of the College presentation this year, we brought to you the primary reserve ratio, which we stand at 51%. The norm and the benchmark is anything above 40%. It's important to keep in mind that the next step is to invest in our resources in order to maximize our productivity. Keep in line that we got two major resources. You just talked about one, which is our capital access. The next one is our personnel. So keep that in mind as we go into this report. Our proposed revenue is represented by 55% of state funding. 81% for student tuition and fee, 6% for transferring pursuant the Florida statute, 7% is related to the other revenue, and 1% is the fund transferring. When you look at the revenue for the fiscal year 2223 for the proposed budget, you can see that our student tuition and fee increased by about 10% in income. State funding increased by 14%. Other revenue is about 100%. This include the loss of revenue for the next fiscal year. Fund transferring is 11%. And pursuant the Florida statute, we have a transferring of about 8.3 million. This include the $4.7 million related to spending plan, and also include the purchase of the rollover and other mandatory, no mandatory transferring. So our total revenue have an increase of about 14%. Now, I don't want you to stay away from the idea that our enrollment continue to decline. So we're going to go to the next slide. When you look at the slide, I brought this one to you back during the Health of the College presentation. If you look at the pink dash line, this is what the Department of Education projected for us back in 2021 during March. They say normally, we're going to go back up, enrollment is going to go all the way up, and then later in August, if you look at the green dash line, the Department of Education projection continued to project a significant decline in enrollment. Now, when you look at the blue dash line, this include the Department of Education projection with the college adjustment and the economic development research recommendation as of right now. When you look at year over year, there is an impact, there is a decrease of about $5.8 million in the student tuition and fee. That's the decline in enrollment that we facing right now. Thanks to the great work of the board, Dr. Williams and Yedid Capital City, we receive a tentative allocation of about $91 million, representing a 14% increase for last year, or about $8 million. You can see in the screen, you can see the 2021 budget, fiscal year 2122, what the Senate approved, what the House approved, what went into the budget conference, and now what is pending final approval by the governor. As I mentioned early on, we are accounting for other revenue, which include a $6.5 million for loss of revenue, and we also include the spending plan, purchase of the rollover, and the transferring, which is about $4.7 million. You got any question about the proposed revenue? Before I move into the expenses, I would like to mention to you, I've mentioned early on to you that we are in a phase where we need to invest in our resources. Two key aspects to keep into consideration in this budget is, one, the impact of the compensation study by Evergreen, and then the second thing is the mandated spending plan. Under the proposed budget, our expense account for 32% of administrative function and 68% of instructional function. Moving into the proposed budget for the fiscal year 2223, we still have the same margin. When you look at instructional, we have increase of about 14%. Academic support, there is an increase of about 24%. Student support, there's an increase of 6%. So the total instructional increase is about 15%. When you go into the institutional support, there is an increase of 22%. Physical plan and operation and maintenance, there is a 6% increase. When you look at the student financial assistance and the contingency, you have to look at them combined. And the main reason is last year, I mentioned it to you that we're going to make some changes to be in line with the Florida College System Accounting Manual, and that's what it is. So when you look at the combined areas, you can see that there is just a net effect of about 4% increase. The overall total operating expenses, there is an increase of about 14%, and we're looking at $166,198,054. Moving along with the college-wide expenses.
I have one question. How are we projecting that those additional funds be spent at this point in time? Is it additional instruction? Is it more tools? Is it, do we know where those dollars you go?
Yes, and technically, when you go to the next slide, that's what you're going to see when I'm going to break down some of the allocation and what the increase in the spending costs. So when you look at this one, you can see that the salaries and benefit, we went for 110.6 million or 123.4 million. We asked Evergreen, and looking at our current scenarios and our institution, based on prior history, what the impact is being in their budget on some other institution. So that's when they come up and say, probably want to look at about $10 million. But for right now, for budget perspective, we got $10 million embedded into the budget to offset some of the changes that we're going to have in relation to personnel and salaries and benefits. There is also a 1% increase on the FRS, and it's going to be in the next slide, which is about $980,000 for the health insurance. Year over year, the health of the college, we mentioned it to you that there's going to be an increase between 4% to 9% increase, but that increase only affect our budget for half of the year. So we're projecting a 3% affecting our health insurance, which is down, you come up with the other 3.4 million. That's on the salaries and benefits. When you look at the current expenses, you can see that we are at 34.65 for the fiscal year 2122, and a jump from 4223 for the fiscal year 2223. All the spending plan isn't related to the current expenses, have nothing to do with salaries and benefits. So the $4.7 million is embedded in the 42.23 million. One of the caveat on this investment, they are one-time use. We cannot make use of those things for the following year. And one of the things that, one of the areas that we cannot make reference every time people was making those proposals is, A, what is the return on investment? How this going to help us to kind of absorb some of the costs in the near future? And those are some of the discussions that we have at the leadership level. Internal capital outlet, we went for 0.4 to 0.57. So I just want you to see where the $10 million is going into it, when the 4.7 is going into it, and then the capital outlet. As we mentioned, we have to show the state that we're making progress on making use of those funds in the spending plan, because we have a high yield plan to make use of those funds. Any question about that before I move to the next slide? Anybody? As I mentioned early on, the compensation study impact as of right now, is an increase of about $10 million that is embedded in the salaries. The FRS increase is about 1%. Keep in mind that for the last three years, the government keep passing 1% increase to the FRS.
Yes.
So these $800,000, it's been the same thing for the last three years, and the state is saying, you need to pay more for the retirement that we have to contribute it to. There is a lot of discussion at a level that I'm not invited to it yet, but just keep that in mind as we move forward. We don't know what's going to happen in terms of the FRS effect in the next couple of years. Health insurance increase, as I mentioned, there is a 3% increase. That's going to be the effect on the next year budget. We're looking at different alternative. Keep in mind that we're part of the consortium. Self-funded, if you look at the self-funded that we used to be many years ago, we probably would be looking at about $10 million right now. So that's a significant change on the impact of the health insurance. On the current expenses, as I mentioned to you, there is a $4.7 million embedded into the spending plan, and then you also have the purchase of the rollover, there's about $2 million in expenses. Any question about the proposed budget? I'll move to the turn.
Can we get a breakdown of the total actual budget, 2122 versus the proposed 2223?
Yes.
Is all this information compiled and together?
More like a side-by-side?
Yeah. Just for my reference.
So may I with the projection at the end of the June? Because all going to depend on the transfer that we have proposed to you all. So if we approve that one, that's going to be hitting the fiscal year 2122, the $4.6 million.
Yeah, include it all.
Okay. Any question?
I don't have any specific questions. I mean, I want to dig into this more, of course. You know, it all hinges on what happens with the state budget and the governor's office. As always, we appreciate everyone's time that's put into this each and every year, especially with so many question marks surrounding what's actually going to be coming in and what we can expect. This is a lot of great information that's laid out a little bit differently than we've done it before, which is, I like. I just need some more time to take a peek.
We've been in this situation before where we didn't have the approved budget, and we would set a sort of a proposed budget.
Yep.
And if the budget didn't come back the way we want it, we would adjust accordingly. At the June meeting, the board would be asked to approve the budget or not, so that we can start in July on the 1st. So we'll keep you posted when the governor does sign, but we can get you to side-by-side quickly.
And if there's any other breakdown we'd like to look at, we'll just reach out and have that sent.
I think the two main differences that you'll see between this current year budget and the proposed is the compensation revenue, which is at this point, and a lot of the other state colleges are having the same issue. It's being competitive.
Right.
I mean, we just have to be in a position to be able to even compete for recruiting our community.
Absolutely.
And then the other piece was the spending plan, which you'll see when we come back in September where we end. The spending plan, unfortunately, the timing of how the due dates and when it's calculated is after the planning piece. So we'll see that when the year end closes, and then in August, we'll come to you with kind of this is where we landed, but you'll really get to see that comparison of where we are with that as well. But those are the two major differences between the two budget years.
Has there been any, sorry Chair, I'm hogging that conversation here. Has there been any discussion with what's been going on in the economy since December? Has the Department of Education reassessed where we might end up if we enter a recession? Has there been talk of student enrollment potentially increasing over the next two or three years, like it did in 2007, '08? Or is it too early for that?
There's been no discussion of enrollment increasing at this point, and I don't know if we'll ever see that play out again where it's a recession, they go back to school. I think that there's so much more entrepreneurship and other things happening that people are not running and flooding the doors of the institutions, but the state has talked, we've had a lot of conversations as presidents about bringing on better programming that meets the workforce needs and not the legacy programs, if you will, that we're used to having, that we've got to make that move to do that. And I think that the other piece that we have had some discussion on is what are some unique ways we can offer education differently? So those are some of the things, but we've not talked about the enrollment increasing because of a pending recession, but there has been talk about a pending recession that is forthcoming.
At least not decreasing would be nice.
That would be nice. I think that the major conversation at the Council of Presidents has been focusing on creating a funding model that we have an opportunity to do, but also the concerns of the great resignation and how community colleges have to do a better job at employee retention. And I thought that was great since we're right on that line and performing the compensation study. But we've also had conversation about the roles and what jobs are still needed in higher ed and what jobs are missing that we need to add and changes in that way. That's been some of the conversations.
On behalf of what you're saying, I'm going to ask a question, but you cannot answer it.
Oh.
Neither Mia. They both know the answer, because I spoke to them already about that. This is a question for everybody. Tell me something that you purchased 10 years ago that you can buy today with the same amount of money. 10 years ago, quick question. One thing that you.
I know the answer.
You can buy the same car?
For the same money?
With the same amount of money?
From 10 years ago? My Vito camera got cheap.
Class at SPC.
Anybody have an answer about that yet?
Class at SPC.
Thank you. That's exactly what we. The only thing that you are able to purchase anywhere right now, for the last 10 years for the same amount, is the education, the higher education at SPC College. And I think that's our selling point. What about return on investment? It's nothing you can buy that you spent 10 years ago for the same amount. So that's something important to keep in mind. The Chronicle of Higher Education have a great information about where we're going on internal enrollment, and we piggyback in two specific areas here. One is our space utilization. How can we become more efficiency in terms of the footprint? That's going to help us probably to kind of move on into the next direction. And then the second thing is your people. That's your bigger asset after your capital asset. And if you can't keep the people that work for you that been here, you got people here that been here for 10, 15 years. Are you going to lose them now to the competition? And the competition is not just the higher education, it's the private market.
It's business in.
And we are not a private market, we're in the public market. So it's hard to compete with people that offer some of the perks that you see in the private institution. So I think keeping that in mind is going to help us to align moving forward into the direction that we're supposed to be going. And I do want to say thank you to everybody that worked during the budget season. It was continuously me emailing you, sending information. I do want to thank my team, or SPC team, or everybody, not just the people that work in the budget department. We got Fabiola, Marco Wesley, Wendy Hee, they work with all the budget managers across the institution to help make sure that we in line and that they are pretty good to our other budget. So thank you everybody for your help during the budget.
I do want to go back on something that trustee Stone Cypher said. He's hoping enrollment does not decline. I think one of the things that we need to really look at is what is the definition of enrollment?
Right.
Enrollment is recruitment and it's retention. You know, you got to bring in new ones and keep the ones you have. Also, enrollment includes more than credit-based programs, but how we're funded is on credit-based programs. What we focused on and what the state is focusing on is rapid credential, non-credit programs. SPC is killing the game in that area, but that's not a part of the funding formula. So we are finding that some students are shifting from the liberal arts AA to something quicker to make a high wage pay before going on to the credit side. The state continues to mainly fund us on enrollment based on credit hour. It's not necessarily based on non-credit. So I have shared that our enrollment has shifted. Our paid enrollment by the state has. Our paid enrollment by the state has declined, but our overall movement to students taking those short-term, 14 weeks, five weeks, eight weeks, short-term trainings to upskill and re-skill, that's going through the roof. So I'm hoping that we can look at, when we're working on this new funding formula with the state, that that gets included in there. So enrollment is enrollment is enrollment. A student is a student is a student. I've heard a previous president say that a lot. And so we just have to, we just have to keep that in mind as we move forward. That enrollment is declined from the credit side. Enrollment is growing in the non-credit, and so we'll have to work on that. Do you think you'll want to have a one-on-one with the budget if you have other questions with the team before we meet in June?
Hi, Mike. Hector knows how much I love digging into this. I'll just let Rebecca know if that's the case, and I'm sure any other board members that want to walk through it.
We did this last year more in-depth.
Right. Okay. All right, if there are no other questions or concerns, ideas?
One quick thing, Hector was just talking about the private sector and how a lot of them are coming and poaching our people. And what they're doing that I don't think that we realize is, we can never match them dollar-for-dollar, but they understand based on the benefits that we offer, they can't actually match us on that either. So what they're doing is they're poaching our people and saying, hey, you've got to give this higher dollar, and we're going to model whatever they're doing that we're on the public side and try to get you guys to come. But we're still a better, still the best show in town when it comes to like the benefits and having the days off and things of that nature. So I don't necessarily think that we have to all get dollar-for-dollar with them, but at least to a competitive rate, which is what Hector and Janet is saying, that we can say, yes, we have this amount of money, and then we can kind of build upon our benefits because that's really the hard thing. I don't think people really want to leave. And we talk about the great resignation, but we also need to talk about the great regret that people are having. Like when they leave, they're like, man, I should not have left where I was at, you know, to come here. So those are the things from HR perspective that I constantly look at and I monitor those things. They do leave, but when they leave, now I'm in a situation, maybe because of the dollar, I can't even go back to where I was at because I'm making more money, and I may have gotten more bills, and the cost of living is so high. So that's something that, you know, board, I would want you guys to really look at as well when you're making that determination.
Thank you. This workshop is adjourned. Thank you.
Good job, everyone.